We will now begin the September 4th, 2025, pre-meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have someone to go over the agenda this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Go ahead and jump right in. Old business, items 1A and 1B. The applicant has requested that these items remain tabled until the October meeting, so we will go ahead and move on. That takes us to new business, items 1A and 1B. This is a request for a conditional use permit at 207 O'Fallon Plaza for a tattoo and body piercing establishment. They're proposing to take both walk-ins and appointments. The hours are 9:00 a.m. to midnight, seven days a week, and they anticipate 15 to 20 artists at this location. They are, you know, staff is recommending approval with our standard conditions. And here's a look at their floor plan that they've provided, and I'd be happy to take any questions on this one.
Looks like there is no question, so let's go on. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Seymour?
As far as being able to see people being tattooed, do they have some kind of blinds or something over the front windows, or is that an issue with the city? I don't know if you'd want children, because there is some consignment shops in that plaza.
Sure. I want to say, in our conditional use permit section, we have additional requirements for tattoo shops, and I believe that's one of them. I don't know from the applicant if they're planning on doing that, but I believe that is one of our requirements.
Right. I wouldn't, I would suspect that, you know, they're doing body piercings too.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody wants to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then let's go on to the next item on the agenda.
All right. Next, new business, items 2A, B, C, and D. This is a request for rezoning, conditional use permit, and site plan for a convenience store with fuel sales at property at the corner of East Terra Lane and TR Hughes, just south of Public Works Drive. They're proposing to rezone the site from I-1 Light Industrial to C-2 General Business District. The building they're proposing will have a gas station with the convenience store at 4,900 square feet, and then there's also some tenant retail space, about 2,600 square feet for that. They are showing a drive-through for a future restaurant, fast food tenant. They do not have a tenant lined up for that yet, so whenever one does come forward, they will need a conditional use permit to use that drive-through. We heard from the applicant today that the elevations and renderings show a Circle K, but they have now said that they're going to go with Phillips 66. So I have a revised elevation to show you. And then additionally, condition number three, with the conditional use permit, will need to be changed to be issued to Five Star Investments instead of Circle K, so just a small change Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from I-1 to C-2. We have a condition that they need to provide a legal description. They have since done that, since the packet went out, so we do have that. And then staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for a convenience store with fuel sales with our standard conditions and a condition to provide the hours of operation. And then again, condition number three will need to be revised. And staff is recommending approval of the site plan with some of the following conditions: address the construction plan comments, provide a fire hydrant within 300 feet of the building if one does not exist, show the location of all HVAC and mechanical units, and show how they're going to be screened. When a tenant moves into the restaurant space, a conditional use permit will be required at that time for the use of the drive-through, and to add a right turn lane on Public Works Drive turning northbound. Here is the site plan. This portion of the building is the convenience store, and then there's a couple small, there's a restaurant space, and then a couple smaller retail spaces inside. Here are the elevations, and then got the new rendering showing the Phillips 66 signage. Pretty much everything on the outside of the building is staying the same as far as color and materials, it's just different signage, so not a huge change there, but just to make you all aware of that. All right, any questions on this?
Mr. Howard?
Thank you. What is the current city ordinance concerning bypass lanes or drive-throughs?
The Planning and Zoning Commission can require them. They're not required by code, but if you, the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to require them, you can. I spoke to them about not having a bypass lane. They said that they just don't have the room for it, so they were fine with just having the drive-through lane with no escape lane. If they have to add an escape lane, they said they would just take the drive-through out completely and make it a walk-in, carry-out only, so.
Concerning the ballards that they're showing, I mean, they're wide enough you can drive a car through, so, I mean, what is the intent of the ballards?
Yeah, they weren't shown on the site plan. They do have the individual parking blocks at each parking space, so, yeah, we didn't have, I thought about it, if that's something you'd like them to move so that it's, they're closer together, we can have that as a condition.
We don't require the ballards. That was just something they wanted to add, which, if you're not going to put them close enough to keep a car from driving through, they're...
Yeah. Yeah, no, I understand completely. Yeah, that'd be a good question for the applicant, if they're, maybe at least center them on the spaces, or bring them closer together, so.
Let's go on to the next item, then.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Next, new business, items 3A and 3B. This is a request for a conditional use permit for the sale and service of alcohol by the drink for Secret Restaurant, which is the name of the restaurant, at 4551 Highway K. This is the old Qatari building, so they'll be moving in there. They have stated that it's going to be a Japanese fusion type of restaurant. Based on the sample menu they provided, they'll have cocktails and beer for their alcohol. The proposed hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. And staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with our standard conditions. Any questions on this?
All right, let's go on to the next item.
Next is new business, item 4A. This is a request for a site plan for a multi-tenant office warehouse development, excuse me, located on the south side of West Terra Lane across from Peroot Crossing Court. They are proposing a 20,000-square-foot building that'll be divided into four tenant spaces. Each tenant would have 1,500 square feet of office space and then 3,500 square feet of warehouse space. They're also showing an additional 12,000 square feet of outdoor storage area. At this time, we're not aware of any proposed tenants for this space, so this would all be kind of, you know, spec space for the building. Staff is recommending approval of this site plan with a couple of the following conditions: provide a sidewalk along West Terra Lane to match the adjacent sidewalk planned with Brock's Tree Service, provide a photometric lighting plan, and the outdoor storage area shall meet the requirements of Code Section 40140-D10-B. That's the section regarding performance standards for I-1 Light Industrial that states that any outdoor storage has to be properly screened and not be visible from 1,000 feet, so they'll need to meet those requirements with that storage area. Here's the site plan. You can see the four different tenant spaces, and then, it's kind of hard to see, but right here is that outdoor storage area. They're showing a fence around it, but as we get into construction plans, we'll make sure they're meeting that Code section. And here are the elevations. Any questions on this one?
Doesn't appear to be, so let's go on to the next item.
All right. New business, items 5A, B, C, and D. This is a request for rezoning, conditional use permit, and site plan for a auto car sales lot at 835 and 839 West Terra Lane. These properties are currently the existing Mylan Busch Auto Source and then a vacant church building. Mylan Busch, the applicant, is looking to demolish both of those buildings, combine it into one lot, and construct a new building with six service bays for Mylan Busch Auto Source. They are proposing to rezone 835 West Terra from R1 to C2 General Business District. That would then have that property match all the surrounding zoning, so then they could combine it with the original Mylan Busch piece of property, so it'd be all one piece. The proposed building will have an office showroom at 3,500 square feet and a six-bay service garage at 4,182 square feet. The proposed hours of operation, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 9 to 7; Tuesday and Thursday, 9 to 6; Saturday, 9 to 5, and then closed on Sundays. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R1 to C2 with no conditions. We're recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the auto sales with our standard conditions for automotive uses. That includes that vehicles shall not be stored or displayed on unimproved surfaces. No vehicles or parts may be worked on outside of the building. Storage of any vehicle parts or products is not permitted outside of the building, and the impound or storage of derelict vehicles shall be prohibited. And for the site plan, staff is also recommending approval with some of the following conditions, like provide a photometric lighting plan and indicate how stormwater detention will be provided. The existing church parking lot served as the detention for that site, so that will need to be accounted for in the design of their site, so we'll need some information on that. Here's the rezoning exhibit, that blue piece is the property to be rezoned. It's currently R1. All the red pieces around it are the existing C2, so it'll kind of match with the character of the area. Here is the site plan. They're closing off their existing entrance, that was about right here, so now I'll just have the 1, and then the six service bays and the office showroom. They have quite a few extra spaces on top of what is required for parking, so they'll have plenty of display area as well. And here are the elevations. Any questions?
This says no unused vehicles. Do you know what kind of new vehicles they're planning on selling?
Our, so our land use category is new and used. It covers both. I think this is just going to be the used cars.
Okay.
That's just the name of our land use category that it falls into.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go on to the next item.
Okay. All right, the last item is item 6A. This is a request for a site plan for canopy addition at 8750 Veterans Memorial Parkway, First Baptist Church of O'Fallon. They're proposing to remove part of an existing sidewalk at the rear of the buildings, between two of the buildings, and construct a covered walkway at the pickup drop-off lane. Staff is recommending approval of the plan with some of the following conditions: provide concrete curb and pavement details, provide light and heavy-duty asphalt detail thicknesses, and show the sanitarium, water mains, service lines, and appurtenances. Here's the site plan. This is on the south side of the buildings that you can see from VMP. They're kind of pulling the existing sidewalk back a little bit so that they can have a designated pickup and drop-off lane. That'll all be covered by this canopy to protect staff, students from the weather. And here is a look at the renderings, so, any questions on this one?
All right, let's go on, then.
All right, that's the last item that we've got on the agenda, so.
We will now begin the September 4th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tracy, can you do the roll call?
Chairperson Carolyn Thomas.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Nunnery.
Present.
Mayor Hennessy.
He will be here shortly.
Councilman Cuskella.
Present.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Seymour.
Present.
Commissioner Nagar.
Here.
Commissioner Bous.
Present.
Commissioner Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Link.
Present.
Commissioner Egomire.
Present.
Commissioner Holting.
Present.
Councilman Cuskella, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the commissions, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Submove, Denary. Second, Howard.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
I hit it like three times.
Voting is closed.
All right, the agenda for this evening's meeting has been approved. At this point in the meeting, we open it up to citizens' comments. These are where citizens can come up and talk about anything that's on the agenda this evening. At this time, we have had no one complete any comment cards, so we will close the citizens' comments and go on on the rest of the items on the agenda. Under old business this evening, the applicant has requested that the next two items for Pheasant Grove subdivision remain tabled until the October 2nd, 2025 meeting, so no further action will be taken on these items from the commission tonight. Under new business, the first item on, under new business, is a public comment for a conditional use permit for 207 O'Fallon Plaza. This is a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the City Council regarding a conditional use permit for 207 O'Fallon Plaza. Machine &amp; Ink LLC is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of a tattoo and body piercing establishment. Do we have someone here to present this item this evening? Yes, come forward and give us your name and address, and tell us what you plan on doing.
Hi, I'm Mike Snarzick. I live at 710 Rabbit Run, Wentzville, Missouri, 633-85. And you guys mentioned a question about whether or not we covered during piercings and tattoos and stuff like that? Is that a question you guys had?
Uh...
For the tattoo shop?
Just tell us a little bit about what you plan on doing.
Oh, tell us about it. Okay, so the plan is, right now in St. Peters, we own one of the largest shops. We have about 15 to 20 employees now, and we have employees coming in, so we don't have a lot of room, so we're wanting to expand over. Right now, we have the highest reviews, we have the best ratings on Google, we don't have anything negative about us, we have zero negative, and like, problems with like the state or the city or the health department, nothing like that. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to duplicate what we're doing now, and it's just going to be a group of artists and a piercer, if not two piercers, and then just the permanent makeup team, which they do permanent makeup, which is like eyes and eyebrows and eyelashes and stuff like that. And then inside there, we're just going to have more room, since we don't have room where we're at now, so we're just going to have a lot more room there. And then we also have more room for storage for like our other pieces and beds and things that we need while we're working. Everything will be covered. We do have privacy areas. The tattoo and piercing have to be separate, so they have to be in separate rooms, so there is a privacy area for the tattooing and for the piercing. So if you're getting any kind of area that you don't want someone to see, you can be in private. And then we also have male and female restroom with a staff restroom. Other than that, we're just basically doing the exact same thing we were doing at the other shop.
Members of the commission, does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Seymour?
Thank you. My concern was being able to see that from the public.
Right.
You know, from the sidewalk or whatever. There is a child, there's a consignment shop there.
Correct.
That sells children's, you know, toys and clothes and stuff, so just as long as it's away from the public view, somebody walking down the street or driving by and you don't want your child going, hey, what are they doing in there?
Totally understandable. Yeah, I can definitely make sure that there's nothing visible like that if I have to get... We were planning on doing window film over the windows anyway, just as a decal for the store, because the sign on the top is just a little small, so it would look better with like a window decal, which is a "See out, not see in," so you'll be able to see just our decals and stuff like that. But every artist has their own station, and in their station, they're provided with barriers, which you can set up and kind of block everything if you had to do anything like that. I mean, most people get tattooed on their arms or their legs or something like that, but anytime there's something like that, we're always completely surrounded by barrier, as well as when we have this place, once we move in here, we want specific rooms that we're able to do that with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Commissioner Nunnery, no, sir, sir? Commissioner Nunnery has a question or comment.
It's my first time, if you haven't noticed.
I just wanted to see you leave and come back. What are your hours of operation?
Okay, so our hours of operation, I think we put on there from 9 to midnight, I believe. Our hours of operation in St. Peters are 11 to 11. So we put extra hours on there just in case, but it would be better for me to be able to start early. Most of our other artists don't start until like 11 to 12, but I, my daughter goes to school, and I work Monday through Friday a.m. sessions, so I like to get in like right after my daughter gets to school and then right back home before she gets off the bus. You're welcome. Thank you. Is that all?
Well, this is a public comment.
Okay.
So if you'll step aside for a moment, we'll see if anyone in the audience would like to, well, we have no comment cards filled out for this item, so, sir, you can come back up. Sorry about that.
It's okay, run me around, I'm fine.
Because we'll close the public comment at this time, because there's no comment cards completed to speak on your item on the agenda.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions regarding this item? If not, do we have a motion regarding this item?
Submove, Denary.
Second, Charlie Nagar.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the City Council regarding the conditional use permit for 207 O'Fallon Plaza. Machine &amp; Ink LLC is the contract purchaser for a tattoo and body piercing establishment. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. Now, this will be at next Thursday's City Council meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so next Thursday.
Okay, cool.
All right? Thank you.
Okay. Oh, wait, real quick, did you...
Okay, so the next item on the agenda this evening is at TR Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane, a convenience store with fuel sales. This is for a unified public hearing and public comment for a conditional use permit for the property at TR Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane for the convenience store. Do we have someone here to present this item on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Ramon Sarmiento with SS Design Plus. We're the architects for the project, and we are proposing to build this 7,500-square-feet building on, with a 32,000-square-foot paved area with fuel sales, gas pumps. In the building, we'll have the typical convenience store, but we'll also have some food sales, but strictly grab-and-go and delivery. Then we'll have a couple of retail stores for possible tenants who might be interested for like cell phone chargers or whatever people might just, you know, grab-and-go also.
Members of the commission, does anyone have any questions? So this, this is a unified public hearing for the, first is for the rezoning of the property. We also have the conditional use permit and the site plan that we're looking at here this evening, so. Commissioner Howard?
Is there any comment cards?
No.
Okay. Are you aware there may become an issue with a bypass lane for the drive-through?
Originally, we are planning on having a drive-through, but due to site constraints, we are eliminating that drive-through option for now, so that drive at the back would be strictly just for utility and services by the owner.
The ballards that they're putting in front of the building are the full width of a parking spot? So I'm trying to understand what the purpose of the ballards are for if I can drive a car between them.
To prevent cars from jumping the curb and, you know, hitting the building, but, you know, I heard that, I understand there's some concerns about it, so we can put them closer together just to make sure that cars are not going to go through them.
I understand what the ballards are intent for, is to keep somebody from driving through the building, but if there's so far spaced apart that you can drive a car between them, they're kind of a mute unless the guy's trying to hit one, so.
Yeah.
Okay. The trash enclosure should have a passive entrance? The only other thing I had was, has anybody looked at the water table at this location?
Yes, and that's one of the constraints that we considered, making sure that we're away from that buffer. That's why we eliminated the drive-through option for now.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments on any of those three parts of this item on the There are no, this is a unified public hearing, but we have no one that's completed any comment cards to speak about this item, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point, since we have no one to speak on it. Does, members of the commission, any other comments or questions regarding this item on the agenda? Commissioner Nagar, do you have anything? Okay. All right, then do we have a motion first regarding the rezoning?
I'm sure I make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Charlie Nagar.
All right, so we have a motion... All right, so we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the City Council regarding the rezoning of the property at T.R. Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-2 General Business District. Five Star Investment LLC is the property owner for the proposed use of a convenience store with fuel cells. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, so we have a recommendation of approval for that to the City Council, and that will be at next Thursday's meeting as well. Now, we'll talk about the conditional use permit. Do we have a motion regarding that from the members of the commission?
Submove, Seymour. Second, Howard.
All right, we have a...
Madam Chair, sorry, before you, sorry, over here, before you vote on that, we need to revise that condition number three, to change it from Circle K to Five Star Investments.
Okay, so...
So we'll need to revise that motion real quick.
Are you okay with?
Yes, sir, let's revise that to show the company name change.
Okay.
Second, Howard.
All right, all right, so we have a motion and a second for a recommendation to the City Council regarding the conditional approval, recommending approval to the City Council for the conditional use permit for the property at T.R. Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane. Five Star Investment is the property owner for the convenience store with fuel cells. With that amendment, for what is in the packet this evening, instead of Circle K, to say Five Star Investment. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. And the next item for this item on the agenda is the site plan. We have a motion regarding the site plan.
I'm Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions with the notation that need a passive entrance and that revisit the ballards patient.
Second, Charlie Nager.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for the property at T.R. Hughes Boulevard and East Terra Lane with the additional items, as Commissioner Howard noted, regarding the passive entrance for the trash enclosure and the ballards for the proposed use of a convenience store with fuel cells. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a public comment for a conditional use permit for 4551 Highway K, Secret Restaurant. This is a request for consideration and motion of action on a conditional use permit for property at 4551 Highway K. Secret Restaurant LLC is the contract purchaser for a sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink. Do we have someone to present this item on the agenda this evening?
Thank you. Well, I'm Lito Galviro. I'm actually a business developer for Gordon Food Services, so I'm the one actually providing Secret, which is taking over the old Hibachi-Katara space, twenty thousand square feet. So their whole design or their whole, what they're expecting to do with this is to bring bold Asian flavors, the Hibachi, that's what O'Fallon is kind of missing right now, since Katara has closed down. So they're trying to introduce that, but a more modern style, and also bring an experience, because a lot of people want to go out and dine, but that space is so large that actually Alex, one of the owners, is actually doing the construction in there, and he's trying to give like a, I guess like a vacation spot. But my role is to provide the food and also menu knowledge and also help them to be a sustainable business, because we don't want them to just open up, we want them to maintain and also provide jobs there in O'Fallon. I think it'd be a great start for them, and I know they have another place that they want to go to, but this is a great way to bring jobs also into that area, because that, I don't know how long the business has been vacant, but I believe in their business, and Gordon Food has been around for one hundred and twenty-five years, and we have a lot of clients already, the wineries, and also Drake's is one of our clients, that we're, will be able to fulfill their needs in that manner, so. And their operations, I believe it's gonna be eleven to eleven, the same hours of operations that Hibachi had or Katara.
Members of the commission, does anyone have any comments or questions? Mayor? No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Seymour?
Madam Chair, Jason, I'll need to excuse myself from this one.
Okay.
I just have one question for you, sir.
Yes.
What's the secret?
You'll find out, as soon as it opens up, you'll find out. I think it's, it was kind of interesting that they came up with that name, but it kind of makes sense, like they, it's like the secret that everybody wants to go and dine, it's for all walks of life, you know what I mean, ages and stuff like that, family, yeah, date nights, whatever, so.
Yeah, I think that's pretty innovative.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
And the reason Mr. Boust recused himself is he's a customer of Gordon Foods, so that's why he recu, just to let you know.
Well, see, yeah, so we're obviously doing something right, so, awesome.
So he is a customer, they're a customer, so that's why he had to recuse himself. So I would just want to add in for the record.
So you, so you work for Gordon Foods?
Yes.
And they're gonna take care of the food operations at the restaurant?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Or everything, I mean, everything they need to get that restaurant up and running.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, from dishwasher to menus to staff training, and, yeah, I'm just excited about the owners right now that are taking this over. That's a big twenty thousand square feet, and to try to make that successful, that's a pretty bold move, and, yeah, we definitely want to make sure that they're successful.
Are they new to the restaurant industry?
No, they've, they've, they got a couple businesses, so, but new to O'Fallon area, and I feel like O'Fallon's growing pretty, pretty quick, too, yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, now, what's the timeline for this project?
So they're looking at, I want to say, end of October, mid-October, yeah. So they're putting the flooring in, should be in, and then all the equipment going in, so it's, it was existing building, but he's just remodeling the inside. It's got the coolers in there, refrigerator and all that stuff, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, this is a public comment, but we have no comment cards completed for this item on the agenda, so I will go ahead and close the public comment and ask the commissioners if anyone has a motion regarding this item on the agenda.
Motion to approve the staff recommendations, Nunnery, and welcome to South O'Fallon.
Awesome, thank you. Keep it a secret.
Second link.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the property at 4551 Highway K. Secret Restaurant LLC is the contract purchaser for the sale and service of alcoholic beverages by the drink. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries.
Okay.
All right, then next item on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for West Terra Lane. Steiner Brothers Investments is the property owner for an office warehouse. Do we have someone to present this item on the agenda?
Hi there, good afternoon. My name is Drake Johnston, and I'm with Bax Engineering, speaking on behalf of the developers. I'm located at 221 Point West Boulevard, St. Charles. The proposed project is located east of the Highway Seventy and Lake St. Louis Boulevard overpass. The subject property is a little over four acres and has an existing zoning of I-1. The neighboring properties are either commercial or industrial zoned and contain various uses. The existing property is heavily wooded, as you can kind of see there. It borders Peruk Creek to the east and Highway Seventy to the south, a MoDOT commuter lot to the west, and West Terra Lane to the north. The proposed project would consist of one building containing four office warehouse spaces totaling twenty thousand square feet, with a additional outdoor storage lot, will be fenced in. Supporting infrastructure, including stormwater, water quality detention will also be provided. We are also going to provide a photometric plan, floodplain development permit, fire district, MoDOT, Corps of Engineers, Missouri DNR approval with construction documents. I'd like to ask if there are any questions at this time.
Members of the commission, anyone have any questions or comments for the petitioner? All right. If not, do we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda?
Motion to approve staff recommendations, Nunnery. Second, Howard.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the site plan for West Terra Lane. Steiner Brothers Investments is the property owner for a proposed use of an office warehouse. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is closed.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a unified public hearing and public comment for the rezoning and conditional use permit for the property located at 835 and 839 West Terra Lane. This includes a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the City Council regarding the rezoning of 835 West Terra Lane from R-1 to Single Family Residential District for the proposed use of an automobile and other motor vehicles. Also, a request for consideration and motion for recommendation to the City Council regarding conditional use permit for 835 and 839 West Terra Lane for the future LLC is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of the automobile and other motor vehicles retail. And then also, the request for consideration and motion for action on the site plan for 835 and 839 West Terra Lane for the automobile and other motor vehicles retail. Do we have someone here to present this item on the agenda?
Hi, again, good afternoon. My name is Drake Johnston with Bax Engineering, speaking on behalf of the developers. This project is located east of St. Dominic Drive along West Terra Lane. It's north of I-70 and west of Mud Autobody and AAA Services. There are two parcels that we're wanting to combine into one later down the road, but the easternmost parcel is currently zoned R-1, the westernmost parcel is zoned C-2. The western parcel currently contains Mylan Bush Auto Dealership, and the eastern parcel contains a parking lot that's being used as vehicle storage for the auto dealership and an old church building. The neighboring properties to the east and west are zoned C-2, while the properties to the north are R-1. I believe the city's comprehensive plan calls out this tract as being ideal for C-2 zoning. The proposed plan would rezone the eastern parcel to C-2 and also obtain a conditional use permit to allow the dealership to expand onto this parcel. This proposed project would consist of removing all existing pavement and buildings to construct a new automotive dealership and associated repair shop on the eastern portion of the site, as well as a parking lot to store and display vehicles. This will require a conditional use permit for the automotive sales to take place. All associated landscaping, buffers, storm sewer and other utility services will be included as well. And I believe a photometric plan, fire district approval, MoDOT, Missouri DNR, and sanitary and water issue approval will also be provided during construction documents. Are there any questions from the commission at this time?
Members of the commission, does anyone have any questions or comment? Commissioner Howard?
Thank you. I have a request to put a traffic, not a traffic light, a street light at the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Didn't get a lighting plan, wanted to make sure there was a light there.
Yeah, we can certainly provide that.
Okay, and the, the trash enclosure is about as far away as you can get it. Is there a reason, or is that just the only spot you had for it, or?
It is a little bit more difficult on that northern part of the site, just with, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a big public utility easement with that stormwater, and the ground is basically running away from the building, so it's a little bit harder to fit it in there, but we would be willing to move it if need be.
I'm not going to be hauling trash to it, so, it doesn't make me, it just seems odd to be so far away.
Gotcha.
How are they going to address the stormwater detention?
Yeah, so I believe I talked to the planners a little bit earlier. We weren't aware that there was stormwater detention being provided in that parking lot, that church parking lot, which I think was the comment listed. So we weren't aware of that, but we can certainly work with staff to provide detention. At this point, we're proposing less impervious pavement on the site than there is existing, so it would improve stormwater runoff, but we will work with staff on that detention issue.
Thank you, sir.
Members of the commission, does anyone else have any questions or comments? This is a unified public hearing, but we have no one that's completed any comment cards on this item, so we'll go ahead and close the unified public hearing. Members of the commission, if there's no other questions or comments, do we have a motion regarding the rezoning on this item?
I'm Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Boust.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the City Council regarding the rezoning of 835 West Terra Lane from R-1 Single Family Residential to District to C-2 General Business District for the future LLC is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of an automobile and other motor vehicle retail. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is now closed.
All right, motion carries. And this will be at next Thursday's City Council meeting, correct? Also, do we have a motion regarding the conditional use permit for this item on the agenda?
Make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions. Howard?
Second, Boust.
All right, we have a motion and a second for a recommendation of approval to the City Council regarding the conditional use permit for 835 and 839 West Terra Lane for the future LLC is the contract purchaser for the proposed use of an automobile and other motor vehicles. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is now closed.
Motion carries. All right, members of the commission, do we have a motion regarding the site plan for this item on the agenda?
I'm Chair, make a recommendation of approval based upon staff conditions with additional condition for a light at the curb cut.
Second, Boust.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the site plan for 835 and 839 West Terra Lane for the future LLC with the addition of the, a light at the entrance of the property for the proposed use of an automobile and other motor vehicle retails. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is now closed.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is a request for consideration and motion for action on a site plan for 8750 Veterans Memorial Parkway. First Baptist Church is the property owner for the proposed use of an addition of a walkway canopy. Do we have someone here to present this item?
Hello, good evening, my name is Ken Backalar, I'm with CJB Architecture and Design here in O'Fallon. With me tonight is... With me tonight is Rich Francis, who's representing First Baptist Church tonight, if we have any questions on that. As mentioned earlier, the, it's, basically this is a steel structure canopy. It's being proposed to provide shelter for drop-off and pickup for the school and the church. The canopy will be located at the existing drive, and it will be inset from what is currently there, so it will fully maintain the two-way drive that's currently there. Existing ADA pathways will be maintained or new provided as required per code. The structure will be painted. It's actually what they call HSS. It's tube steel, so when we say steel, it's a little more attractive than just a, you know, a wide flange type of structure. But that will all be painted to kind of coordinate with both of the buildings, which are, is brick, and again, it will all blend in and coordinate. The project consists of also providing all-new concrete that you see there, which includes part of the existing entry to the church and both the youth building. There was also a light pole that's being relocated that contained some parking standards that's being removed or relocated, as I mentioned, and the plan is to come back with a, a new pole in South Island there that's labeled. So we do have photometrics that we'll provide to staff for that. As far as lighting, there's also some downlighting that'll be provided to provide, you know, lighting under the canopy all the way up to the church and, and both buildings, actually. And really, that's it. If they have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Members of the commission, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this item? Commissioner Howard?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. There, I know there was a comment about the curb detail. Is there really going to be a curb? I mean, when I think of walkers and, and wheelchairs and stuff, that's time for people that are going to be using this.
Yeah, I, I think right now the, the plan is to have the curb there, and part of that is, you know, you think of people driving, dropping off, and just the, you know, aside from having bollards every so many feet to protect, it just kind of is a wheel stop for the cars. So, yeah, that's a desire for, for the church or, or the committee. We can look at, look at that closer. The, the plan is actually at the entry to be at parking level, so as far as the walking entry to the church there, it should be flush. But, so right now, yeah, to answer your question, yes, there'll be a curb.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments regarding this item on the agenda, do we have a motion regarding this item?
So move, Nunnery. Second, Howard?
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for 8750 Veterans Memorial Parkway. First Baptist Church is the property owner for the proposed use of an addition of a walkway canopy. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is now closed.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. This is a motion for recommendation to the city council regarding the following items relating to easements, right-of-way and other public facilities or interest. We have authorizing disposal of surplus properties and the easement vacation alter at the Preserve. Do we have a motion or any comments or questions regarding the consent calendar this evening?
Motion to approve is presented. Nunnery? Second, Howard?
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar for the September 5th, excuse me, the September 4th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Members of the commission, cast your votes.
Voting is now closed.
All right. The consent calendar for this evening's meeting has been approved. At this point in the meeting, we have a city council action update. David?
Yeah, there was one item that was approved at the last PNC meeting that went to council is a conditional use permit for a contractor service at 921 Highway K. That was approved. So that was the only item.
All right. All right. Well, then, at this point, we will now adjourn the September 4th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.